Who they able. Their schedules to be able to join us today for this important conversation. We'll begin by sharing the mission and I'm going to read the mission to get us started today. The Early Learning Board mission is to support children's academic and lifelong well-being by directing and supporting the E O E L for an effective, coordinated, high-quality early learning system from prenatal to kindergarten entry. Keep that in mind as we proceed with our deliberations for today's meeting. I'm going to do a roll call for attendance to determine officially the existence of a quorum. Justina?
Here.
Erin?
Present.
Katie Yelhanyi? Katie Yelhanyi? She may be joining us later. Sure. Megan? Thank you. Ben Naki? Not here. May?
Here.
Bob Peters is here. Napur?
Yeah, here.
Mari? Carrie? Melody?
I'm here.
Here.
Rochelle? Not able to make it. Steve Schatz? And Matt Shim?
Here.
You have seven voting members, which is one more than we need for a quorum, so the meeting may proceed. Next item on the agenda today is the opportunity for public comment. Anyone in the public who wishes to share some thoughts at this point should indicate in the chat and we will invite you to share your thoughts. I don't see any. Do you see anything? Okay. There appears to be no public comment at the moment, so we will move to the primary conversation for this meeting that will be presented by Matt Shim, the convener of the Governance Standing Subcommittee. And Matt, I will turn it over to you. And thank you for leading this conversation.
Thanks, Bob. Good morning, everybody. So we're here to discuss the outcome of Senate Bill 1022 decision-making hearing that was held on February 13th, 2023. As you know, or if you did not know, the decision was to pass the bill as is to the Ways and Means Committee, which is actually being heard today at 9:30. So our previous, at our Early Learning Board regular meeting, we had discussed a way ahead. But now we are faced with another decision point because the bill is moving forward and will eventually, I'm assuming, will cross over to the House for testimony and we should be prepared to testify, probably in the Education Committee and then again, the Finance Committee or wherever, wherever gets scheduled and if you did not hear the comment from Senator Kidani before the decision was made, she said the E L B could not make up their mind or something along those lines. And she passed as is. So that puts us in a position where we probably need to come to a decision and have testimony already and available for Rep. Woodson for the Education Committee. So we have the Subcommittee. The Governance Subcommittee met and we discussed basically what are the in simplest terms, what are the possibilities? Let me share my screen. Can I get access to share screens, please? Thank you. Okay. So there's four basic possibilities. One is approve 1022 as it is. Number two, oppose 1022 and say why. Three, amend the current S B 1022. Or number four, amend the version of our current Early Learning Board statute. So before we get into specific discussions, any thoughts on any people's opinions or thoughts on what they think should be the way ahead? And there's no, there's no wrong answers. We're going to discuss all of them, but would like to get people's ideas or opinions. Anyone?
Matt?
Hi, Melody. Go ahead.
Hi. So I don't think I'm ready to look at any of those possibilities yet. I'm still I still have a question, the same question that I had at our last reading regarding our relationship with E O E L. And how or how that looks as a board that oversees or manages or works. I'm not sure what the word is actually in terms of the Executive Office and Early Learning. I started seeing that it's possible the E O E L has a path that they're on. And the board, which was created to for the E O E L also has a path that they're on. And so I still have like questions about that and I'm not sure how to proceed in my own mind until some of those questions, maybe someone can attempt to respond to.
Okay, I'll try and do my best in general terms. So originally, as an advisory board, it was representative to assist in the development and as the E O E L itself was growing and as it moved from a office at the governor to basically a program attached to D O E, right, as its own standalone program. The board as it is now is number one, responsible for hiring the Executive Director and providing the guidance to the E O E L, not on specific day-to-day matters, but broader general policy and or I would say issues across the early learning system. And then as, as board members, everyone has their own unique subject matter expertise to help move the conversations and hopefully come up with a decision that ultimately assists the E O E L in executing their own, in executing the state plan. Bob, how did I do?
I think, Mel, also that if you go back to what part of the intention was initially, it was to ensure stability within the office, the executive office on early learning and not have the position which was originally appointed by the governor to be subject to political changes when a new governor assumed authority. We checked back to get a little bit more sense from Representative Chukumi about it and, you know, one of the other things that was considered in terms of the composition of the board is that the diversity of perspectives would help to influence better decision-making. So those were two other pieces that I might throw in. No, I don't know if that really answers your question because I'm not sure I'm clear yet on what your question is.
So while, Melody, one more thing I want to say is if you, if you consider E O E L similar to a corporation or a business or a private entity or like nonprofits, nonprofits have an executive director, they have their way ahead, their, their mission, their goals, but they have they're required to have a board of directors that are independent of the actual nonprofit that help guide and again lend their expertise to the, you know, the business, the decision-making, because not all of those, not all of those subject matter expertise may reside not only in the executive director, but within the staff. Right? You know, so it's actually relying on the broad board of directors and if you do it correctly, you're getting a nice, a nice cross-section of different folks on the board to, you know, help and assist either the nonprofit or the agency, the corporation make, make the decisions as those decisions that are necessary for the board to make, that can't be made specifically by the executive director or staff. And again, those are, I think, the broader, higher level policy and or way ahead versus the day-to-day aspects of business, you know, of E O E L. So does that help? Does that help at all? Or you have?
It is somewhat. Just keeping in mind that I'm one of those folks that have been around for a while since the beginning of the Executive Office on Early Learning. So I'm trying to just follow this process. So somewhat, the clarification somewhat, I'm just, I was just also interested in the response that you gave at the last meeting when we talked about the plan, the state plan versus the E O E L's plan and how that works in terms of our responsibility to E O E L. So are they creating a plan for them, for the E O E L with guidance from the D O E or are, and then are we creating a separate plan that includes all the other parts of the system that the E O E L does not have to be responsible for? You know what I'm saying? There is, for me, there needs to be some clarification with those responsibilities as, as a board member.
Bob, you go, you want to take a?
Well, I can talk about what
so I can talk about what E O E L is doing in terms of our relationship to the state plan. So in our office, our office is creating what we call our, our office plan. And so our office plan is aligned with the, the five blocks of the state plan. And it also references statute, board priorities and things like that on our, why I'm calling it our website because that's how our document is formatted. And within that, we also looked at the Strategic Implementation Plan where it mentioned E O E L as a champion. And we've got those pieces in our office plan to see how are we moving along on the pieces that we said E O E L is going to be a champion for? And then also because we just got the PDGB5 brand, we're starting to fold in the PDGB5 pieces into our office plan. And so our office has been working on this for a little bit of time. I I've had conversations with Sher Peters about it. And so we're trying to figure out the timing of like, when do we think the board wants to see it? Because it's taken a little bit of time for our office to kind of get to this point where it's pretty presentable. And so what we decided was maybe after the ledge session finishes, we can see what has come of it and then incorporate those pieces and then present it for our next, you know, the next year. But just so that people here know, like, we've when we started it, we have what we want to accomplish this year, the 22, 23 year, what we want to accomplish in the, you know, the next year for the next five years. So it's essentially a five-year plan that's aligned to the building blocks in the state plan and also incorporates statute pieces and strategic implementation plan pieces, some board priorities and things like that. So that's how we are using the state plan and the strategic implementation plans to guide the work that's happening in our office right now.
It's also, I think, you go, I hope I'm saying this correctly. So correct me if I'm not. An effort to prioritize because we obviously can't do all that's in the state plan. So what's most immediate, that needs to be worked on. And the board's role in the relationships to that, I think, is to provide the kind of support or resources that it might do, expertise, if it's appropriate in certain areas. The subcommittees could be supportive of that effort. All of it still ties into the state plan in some way. And that's kind of the structure, I think, we've been looking at. Is that your sense?
I think that that's correct. And then I think the one thing that our plan also includes are where are the areas in which E O E L is taking the lead on certain things and where do we support? Because if you look at all the different areas and committees and work groups and things that our office is a part of, we've also categorized those by each of the building blocks in the state plan and said like, what group is it? Who's a part of it? And kind of matrixed that out. So that's not the part that we lead, but that's the part that we support. So we're trying to track what are we leading and what success looks like and those markers of progress. And then also the other portion where it's where we are, where we are just generally supporting, but not necessarily the lead for things that are aligned with the state plan.
Mel, does that help answer the question?
It does. I'm going to let someone else ask some questions now because I'll probably have a couple more.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah.
Thank you, Melody. All right. Any, anyone else who, who would like to share any thoughts or ideas?
Hey, Matt, I just have a question on whether or not, has the Governance Committee had a chance to meet between our last meeting and this one to discuss some of the potential options? And I don't know if you guys ended up landing with a recommendation or not.
We did meet and we will have recommendations, but we're also trying to get thoughts and get how board members are feeling or what your opinion is or what, maybe what you would like to see. So I mean, before we, before we have a more directed conversation on recommendations, again, we're trying to have a open conversation. So people are free to discuss their ideas or thoughts.
Hi, it's Erin.
Hi, Erin. Go ahead, please.
Hi. So I did try to take a look at some of the write-ups, I guess, or summaries that are on the website for Early Learning Board to kind of look through and see like, what are we not doing? What are we doing that's in alignment with the things that have been kind of set forth? And I noticed that the charter for, at least the one that's on the, the website, I should say, it really, it, the posted one is from 2013. There is another thing on here that I found that was from 2014. And, and so it really gave me pause to think, I don't know how to answer this question because I felt as if the documents were outdated. They still referenced E-Lab and things like that. So I kind of was honestly a little I'm a little stuck with kind of being able to make an informed recommendation because I, I don't feel that I even know that we have it written down what our purpose is at the Early Learning Board, kind of like as it exists today, if that makes sense. So I I guess I just wanted to share that. It's not that I'm being, I'm being quiet, not because I don't care or that this doesn't matter to me, but because I'm having difficulty arriving at, at a solid conclusion with the documents that we have currently working. So I don't know, I'm not really asking a question. I guess I'm just sharing my, my manao as to why I'm struggling to provide a recommendation in how to move forward. I don't know if anybody wants to or can respond to that or would like to, but I would welcome that. I just, so I think to that end, I do, I am curious to hear what the Governance Subcommittee recommends because I feel that perhaps they might have more direction than what I, I can come up with at this time.
Matt, I'm happy to jump in since I'm like Mel, we're around a long time on all of this. A charter was done for the Advisory Board because it wasn't as specific in the legislation. And instead of a charter per se in that same way, the governing board, when it became a governing board, E L B, we determined instead to create a mission, a vision, and then beliefs about the system and how it should develop. And so those pieces that we shared for the orientation took the place of the charter, actually, to give us guidance and direction. Now, certainly a great deal has changed since that was done because initially when we started out, the charge for the E O E L was to set up the public pre-K primarily. And remember, it had opposite one person. So part of that the passing of resources, subcommittee design and the governance design and the mapping efforts was to figure out what the system would look like and to give some direction for where should the energy be along with the development of the state plan, which was the key piece at that time. So that's kind of how we got to where we are today. And it's, it's a different shape, I think, than, than the charter was. Erin, but those were meant to be the guiding documents to really lead us forward. So that may not settle the issue you have, but it gives you at least some historical context. I don't know. Do you want to add anything? So you, you may recall some other things. I don't, I don't know. No? Okay.
Thank you, Erin. So any, anyone else? Again, this is a free time to offer some insights or ask questions as we start our conversation about the four possibilities, approving 1022 as is, opposing 1022, amending 1022 or amending our current E L B statute. But again, the floor is, floor is open to anyone.
Hey, Matt, this is Carrie.
Carrie, go ahead.
Hi, I'm sorry I'm late. One thing I've been thinking about, and I don't know, it's kind of a radical idea, and I don't even know how I feel about it. I do just want to put it on the table, is what would it look like? You know, if we were to change the statute and do away with the Early Learning Board and create an advisory and have E O E L under the Board of Ed, given that the current proposal looks very similar to the Board of Ed, it seems really silly to duplicate two boards. I don't know of any other attached agencies in the state that have their own boards. And so it was a question for me in terms of would it be more helpful to be more of an advisory? So I don't know. I don't know how I even feel about that comment. It's just, I was trying to think more outside the box, given that we're, we're you know, further away from what was originally intended 10 years ago. And so I, I think that's just a question for me.
Thanks, Carrie.
Matt?
Yes, go ahead.
This is Melody. So right now, after some of the conversation, I, I'm just seeing the board that currently as it's kind of a standalone a standalone board that is providing guidance to the development of the system, the early learning or early education and care system. Originally, the system, no one knew what the system, what even the four settings were, what the system was 10 years ago, what why we even needed a system. So I'm seeing that, you know, and hoping that progress has been made to educate folks on what early learning system is, what education and care system is and all the pieces of that. And I see we have that with the Strategic Implementation Plan and State Plan and with the E O E L whose primary focus might be universal pre-K. So I'm wondering the way, the way that I see the bill now, it doesn't negate any of the the representation, the members. representation, the member representation. It just kind of looks at it differently. That's how I, I see. We could still have representatives from uh different uh settings or, or, or parts of the system just under those, you know, the guidelines that are part of the bill. So I don't see it negating any of the way the board is how we're uh composed now. Um, so and I'm just wondering if that's kind of like a, to me, I feel like this is this big destruction that we just have to get out of the way, the elephant in the room. We have representation of the four settings originally. It, they were important because folks didn't know what the system was. Now 10 years later, do folks know what the system is? Do they understand? Have we progressed with educating folks, this, the, the, the various departments? I mean, that would be my question now. And that's what's keeping us hesitant about the change.
Thank you, Melody. Anyone else like to share?
Matt, if I could just say one more thing, um.
Yes, go ahead.
If those four options are the four options we're discussing that you posed, for me, it's pretty clear based on just the limited, our conversation last week, um, along with just a few minutes I've listened to is you would make the most sense to oppose the bill right now, given that we don't have clarity and the board hasn't come up with what the board feels is the right um approach moving forward. Um, and I think it's going to take us a while to get to a place. If, if we're going to do this right, it, it's going to take some research. It's going to take some conversations. I, I do think it's going to take some conversations with E O E L. Um, to come up with an alternative, right? If we were to come up with amendments to the bill, we'd want to make sure that people felt comfortable um and confident and it was well, uh, it was well researched and not shoddy, you know, because I, I think the bill right now is pretty cut and paste from the Board of Ed without a lot of justification. And so that would be the reflection I have is I'm not sure as a board we're ready to support it. And I don't think we're ready to provide an alternative. Um, and so to me, it makes sense to oppose, but that's, that's my two cents.
Thanks, Carrie. Others, others, any other? Any other ideas or uh conversations?
Oh yeah, take your money now.
Oh yes, go ahead.
Aloha. Um, I, I guess I just wanted to add in, um, I, I appreciate what, what Carrie is saying about, you know, putting in some kind of opposition. Um, at the same time, I feel like we, if we can put forward some kind of recommendations, um, I think that would be helpful because I, I do feel like this is going to move with or without us. And um, you know, I feel like if we can at least provide some, some suggestions or some other um thoughts that might be helpful. Um, I would really like to include that in testimony moving forward. Um, and then of course, my biggest concern is the lack of inclusion of an H M E or Aho Poonanaleal seat. Um, so I did just want to say that. I know you folks have heard me say it many times, but I did want to put that forward. Mahalo.
Thank you, Kaua'ulani.
Matt, if I may build on Kaua'ulani's.
Yes, go ahead.
Carrie, I would agree that it would really be nice to have lots of time to really sort this out, which was our intent. Um, and looking for other models, but I think Kaua'ulani is, is probably correct in terms of if, if we don't make some suggestion, it will be done for us. Um, and so I think the, and, and while that may not be the ideal position at this point, I'm not so sure we have the opportunity for perfection. Um, but I would urge us to think about how we want to influence this decision going forward. Uh, and whether or not there's some ways we could modify one or two possibilities to get us to a place where we were comfortable with suggestions, they had a reasonable rationale. Um, and that we could move forward with testimony around them to amend or change the bill as it currently exists with the thought that while we know it won't be ideal, there can be other opportunities to change um, what's in statute in the future if we have to and we find out it doesn't work. Um, but I, I do share the concern that if we don't offer something, um, we will not have been really included in the conversation. I don't know if others feel similarly, but.
Aloha, this is Napua. I, I'm in agreement with both Kaua'ulani and Chair Peters. Um, just from Kaitani's remarks, I feel like action needs to happen. That's what she wants to see, action. And so I think putting together some sort of action next steps will somehow I don't, will somehow help us shape the composition of the board if that, if that happens. I'm definitely in agreement that there needs to be a Hawaii medium education representative on that board. Um, so I, I'm thinking the next steps is to just possibly if everyone else is in agreement is to really look at the proposed bill and try to identify areas that we want to keep in the current need of a very, very important model.
Thank you, Nakua. Others, anyone else? No, Melody, go ahead.
Um, so with that said, um, I, I'm going to be in agreement with, we need to add the Hawaii medium uh culture, traditional practice, language, uh, person in the qualifications. Um, I also see that um, there, a person with early learning, um, uh, training or understanding, but also we need to add a familiar or have experience with um, the systems piece, the different pieces of the system, this different settings. Um, that, that's not clear in the um, the qualifications either. And, and with that, I, I think we've put in what originally we felt was necessary was to make sure that people were aware there were parts of, of a system, right?
Thank you, Melody. Others, anyone else?
Um, Matt, I have a, a question, a clarification question on the bill.
Okay, go ahead.
People know, um, and I don't disagree with what everybody said. I think, I mean, I still think it's an oppose with comments and recommendations. Um, for the one, like one voting member from the county of Maui, one voting member from the county of Ko'ee. These are just at large people that live in those counties, correct? We're not talking about people that are representing counties. And I think that's also a conversation that we need to have. Um, I support the Hawaii, um, Hawaiian medium rep, representative to be included. But, but I think when you talk about this county representation piece and what our recommendations are for that, um, no, are we anticipating that one person that but you know, potentially works in an early childhood program in Maui is representing the county of Maui and all the families across the three islands? Um, I don't know.
Thanks, Carrie. Um, I don't believe that the qualifications and or the bill itself specifically say that the person represents specifically the entire county. Uh, it's just a person from that location, that uh geographic location that meets the minimum qualifications of integrity, virtue, ethical standards, conscientious attentive board member, understanding of best practices in early learning. Uh, or be willing to train in best practices in early learning governance, clear understanding of board's role, developing and protecting a clear, long-term strategic vision for early learning. Um, and then uh meeting the other qualifications of leadership experience and interest in uh early learning and dedication to the social, academic and character development of children. So nowhere in there does it say representing families and or the position of the county. It's just a person who resides uh in that county that meets these other qualifications.
Thank you for clarifying. And so a question for me is essentially what we're shifting to is away from program type representation to geographic representation. And we really aren't reducing our numbers that dramatically. I think we're reducing by three. Um, so I think a question for the board is, do we feel that that is the right structure? And if so, why? You know, and that should go into our testimony. And if not, why not?
Okay, thank you. The other, uh, Erin, I think, uh, I think I saw.
Yes, um, thank you. I think, um, as everyone's sharing, I'm I'm reflecting on a few of the challenges that I think I've um thought through over the past year and a half or still being on the board. And, and I do think that the I will say that the new structure may eliminate, and I'm saying may, may eliminate some of the ethical questions that have been asked um regarding the early learning board, the members and um some of the funding related questions that have come up as a result. Um, so I do see that as a potential um benefit of the structural change. I think a question I have is, has the subject matter expert, so to speak, um, governing board helped the early, the, the E O E L actually move toward its um intended outcome? And I, that's, that's a, like, that is a question I have. Um, I don't know if anybody can, you know, respond to that. Um, are the subject matter experts still the people who should govern the these, this office? Um, I, I heard Carrie's suggestion or comment, I should say not suggestion of an advisory and then be attached to the Board of Education, which makes sense kind of logically. But then I was thinking, oh, well, the, the special um system of early learning may then get lost in the greater, you know, the greater needs of the Board of Education's duties. Um, and we have, you know, developmentally appropriate practices that we're talking about that are different for our babies and our young ones. So I can see why there is a desire to keep things separate. Um, in, in that, in that way. But once again, you know, if we are moving towards county representation, then what does that bring to the, what does that bring to the conversation? Um, so sorry, these are just kind of my thoughts as we're speaking. Once again, not really a question or any, well, I guess I did have one question. Um, but uh, uh, just kind of some, some things I think that would help me to feel more confident in, in that decision.
So uh, just, just to clarify, uh, building off of uh, uh, what Carrie asked, it's not specifically county representation?
Sorry, yes.
Yeah, yeah, no, just, just, I mean, it's a, um, in different ways, I, I know we are probably all involved in different uh uh committees or, or organizations or things that actually do have county-specific representation. Uh, and that serves a very particular purpose, right? Because the, the county itself requires a, a voice or, um, you know, uh, ensuring that the counties, the, the county is included in decision makings, right? So uh, Department of Health, you know, one of the, one of our charges is to not be Oahu-centric, right? And, uh, it's easy to do it when you think about the, the uh geographic mass of people, right, uh, on, on Oahu. But then at the same time, our neighbor islands and our rural communities uh are really what makes us Hawaii, right? I mean, that's, so, uh, so in those particular ways, county, county representation becomes very important. But this specifically just provides the opportunity for people who meet the qualifications that happen to be from that county can apply and say, hey, I'm the early learning person and I happen to be in Maui County. I'm going to apply for the Maui County seat uh on the board. Uh, but it's not specifically, again, uh, representing representing specifically the county. However, that person obviously living in the county can provide those insights to what it's like for um, uh, metro Wailuku, uh Kahului, and then, you know, remote portions of Hana and um, uh, the in-between places like Kihei and then our, uh, you know, remote islands of uh Lanai and Molokai and, and how, how those are uh sometimes lost in Maui County, right? So so just, uh, hopefully people keep, keep that in mind that these are not specifically county representation versus uh qualifications, people that live in those counties. Thanks, thanks, Erin.
So Matt, just for clarification purpose, it doesn't leave those folks out though, correct? The county, the county representation, i- if there was someone identified as the county rep for early learning, this would not leave them out of that uh seat on the board.
Correct, I mean, correct. They could apply, yes. And again, they apply and uh ultimately would be appointed by the governor and or, oh, I guess they have to go through the Senate confirmation. Um, uh, and you know, have the hearing and then be approved by the Senate, so.
You know, one, one of the parts of the bill says that, um, with regard to the governor, the governor shall provide written documentation articulating the administration's goals and priorities with respect to the formation of a highly functioning, well-balanced board and describing the nominee's qualification. If, for example, and I'm thinking of this specifically with respect to the counties. If, for example, the governor felt that the counties had particular issues that needed to be addressed around the early learning system and care, that could be the kind of filter being used for whom should that the governor appoint? So it gives greater flexibility. So it gives greater flexibility. It demands of the governor some sense of what the outcomes would be. And I would assume E O E L would be the primary informer of what some of those outcomes should be as a member of the executive um office in the way that they are. So there, there are ways to look at this as, this plan, I'm not saying I'm in favor of the bill as it now sits. But the possibilities of it are not limited if we look at it broadly. And also, I think now you mentioned this earlier, it could be anybody who currently sits on this board who ended up sitting in this board as it's now associated, if appointed by the government. And presenting themselves as this is the skill set that's needed at the moment, thinks it gives a little more flexibility there. Matt, you're not probably gonna be able to see Megan, but I can. So Megan has something she wants to say.
Yeah, I agree. I wondered, um, if, you know, the qualification piece is what worries me right now, because I think you're right, i- any one of us here could be representative of the counties. But the way that qualifications are written doesn't necessarily speak to that right now. It's, for me, it's a little too loose in terms of having an interest in early education versus experience. Uh, which I think would be most useful for E O E L. So without getting too specific about those qualifications, I think we can redraft them so that they speak to the experience of those that can currently sit on the board now um while representing those counties. My second piece is I also wondered if the creation of some of the new county coordinator positions, um, their early education coordinators were a thought as they wrote this legislation because, um, for this bill, because, you know, the language sort of speaks to those positions a little bit. And I wondered about what that would look like if you had county coordinators filling those seats. And is that, um, you know, is that the kind of diversity maybe of thought we need to see on the board? I'm not sure.
Yeah. It, it also might result in the kind of questions that Erin was re- um raising before about potential conflicts of interest, because they would be there with, you know, um possibly, I mean, I don't know if it would potentially, that could be.
Uh, Piyulani, I think I saw your hand up.
Yes, Mahalo. Um, I, there is a kind of an underlying thought that, well, I guess Erin said it first, and then I feel like there's this underlying tone um in terms of the flexibility that would be allowed under the current bill um for the representation from the counties. And I just wanted to put out there again what Erin was getting to on what kind of supports E O E L would need. And I don't know that it would be all early learning. You know, when I'm looking at board composition for any type of board, it's very unusual that a board all from one sector is highly efficient or effective. So I just wanted to throw that out there as maybe another thought that we should consider when we're, when we're thinking about how close or, you know, tight, we're, we're kind of narrowing down these um suggestions to. So I just wanted to put that out there, too. And I don't know what that would be for E O E L, but I'm just thinking in general for board composition. That's, that's usually what you want. You want some, you want resources on your board. So, yeah, that's all. Mahalo.
Thank you, Piyulani. Uh, Carrie, I see your hand up. Go ahead.
Uh, yeah, I think another big question for me, it goes back to, again, the scope of E O E L. Um, and I find it interesting that in the bill, they have the ex officio recommendations to be commandment schools and, uh, and H A I S, which is very early education um preschool-focused. And so for me, we lose children with special needs, we lose the birth-to-three population. We lose, you know, I, I think that's also, I, I just continue to struggle with, you know, what is the scope of E O E L? And how does this board best support that scope and charge? Um, and if E O E L is saying that this early childhood state plan is not their plan, there's still some of those big questions for me. And I, I did bring this question back to the H A I C C, I, H A I C C, so that I wasn't speaking without talking with them about how they felt about potentially not having representation on the early learning board. And they weren't happy with that. Um, I just spoke with the exec council because they said, you know, E O E L right now isn't doing a lot for children with special needs, birth-to-three. And so what happens if that voice isn't at the table? You know, will E O E L just continue to focus on four-year-olds or potentially three-year-olds? And so for me, it's still this big question mark around scope of E O E L. Um, and if we are really just focused on public pre-K um for threes and fours, and that's going to be the focus of E O E L, which I think is fine, then what's in this bill suffices? But if we really are looking at an early cha- early childhood development system from prenatal to five, um, then I, I still have some big question marks. Um, and I'm not sure that county and geographic representation is what it needs. You know, our Department of Education is a closed system. Our early childhood system is not a closed system. It's across different state departments. Um, and so so for me, that's where I still feel like the, whether it's advisory, that's helping E O E L think about the, the, the system across health, safety and learning um wouldn't be more helpful than just people that are representing counties in ge- in geographies. So I don't know if that's, like, go ahead.
Yeah, I was gonna say, again, to clarify, nothing in there in the bill specifically states that the person represents the county. The people represent the qualifications and are from the county, not not speaking for the county.
Right.
So the geographic, the geographic portion of it is really only where they live, but the, but the the applicant has to meet the qualifications listed in the bill, which is the early learning focus, et cetera. But not not representing the interests, specifically the interest and or the business of the county.
Right. No, I, I understand that. Um, but we're switching to geographic representation versus like a type of setting, representation. Um, and so maybe it is tightening the requirements for those county, those not county representatives, those people in that live in the different counties. Maybe it's tightening those up a little bit. I don't know.
Thank you, Carrie. The others, anyone else? Okay, I believe I have paused enough and, and uh given folks opportunity, uh, even if it was somewhat painful. Uh, thank you. Uh, it, it's, it's important for to give folks time to consider, think, right? Because you can't just necessarily have ideas pop into your head. Sometimes it requires a little bit of thought. So I know, Bob, I have about an hour left to continue our discussion. But yeah, but uh approximately, I wanna, I wanna stay as close to uh time as possible. Um. The, so we discussed, uh, let me share my screen again. So we discussed in general that there's four broad possibilities, uh approving ten twenty-two as it is, uh, which is basically agreeing with uh Senator Kidani and just letting it, letting it move forward. Uh, we can oppose it, uh, and obviously we need to come up with why. Uh, and then potentially, as part of that opposed, we would offer amendments uh either to the current version of ten twenty-two or some other, some other version, including amendments to our current uh E L B structure. So I am going to, um, I'm going to make a big assumption at the moment that people probably do not want to discuss approving ten twenty-two as is because we've been discussing all the reasons to not have it as is. We we have hinted at uh discussions at the Early Learning Board meeting and here about opposing ten twenty-two, why, why it's not necessarily uh, it may not be the best, uh, or it may be, uh, there's pieces and parts that uh uh may work, may not work. Uh, so really it comes down to uh our next topics for discussion. Uh, the Governance Subcommittee uh thought hard, long and hard about this and decided to come up with a couple of recommendations for the board to consider. Um, so, uh, and uh those include an amended version of ten uh twenty-two and then the amended version of the current E L B structure. So we will move to a discussion about the amended version of ten twenty-two. So if you remember Senator Kidani's uh discussion, uh, and if you, I think we told you after, after the initial Education Committee hearing, and she gave us an opportunity to uh provide additional information. Uh, basically, her, her charge to us is the board is too big and you need to make it smaller. That was her, that was her basic way ahead. So if we look at the structure of uh ten twenty-two, uh, there's nine voting members, there's six non-voting members, there's qualifications, term limits. So, um, one of the first things, uh, well, one of the, one of the broad topics we discussed about um membership uh in, in any of these is uh number one, to make, to make sure, since a Hawaiian, to, we are, we are guests in the indigenous lands of Kanaka Maui. Olelo Hawaii must be represented on the board, period. So Hawaiian medium is a, is a seat in both options. So that's, that's a, uh, that's a given. So Piyulani and others, we heard you. Uh, so this is ten, this is ten twenty-two as is, one member from each county. Uh, except instead of having three members from Oahu, uh, we said just one from each county and then do three at large. Uh, representative of the Hawaiian medium, uh pediatrician with a child development focus, and then six non-voting members, which is D O E, D H S, D O H and U H as they currently are, and then adding commandment schools and uh H A I S. None of this precludes anyone uh from any of the current uh representatives from applying for any of these. Uh, the, the four county seats or the three at-large seats. And then, um, one thing would be to amend the ten twenty-two to add a stakeholder advisory council uh potentially that meets four times a year and that advisory council members may serve on board subcommittees. So that is, that is our one um recommendation. If we amend ten twenty-two in its current, in its current form. The second recommendation is to modify our early learning board structure based on, based on our early learning board structure with pieces of ten twenty-two. So again, it's still nine voting members, six non-voting members. The nine voting members would include one from each county, Hawaiian medium, uh Hawaii chapter of American Academy of Pediatricians, a center-based provider, family-child interaction learning provider and Head Start provider. Uh, non-voting members would be the same six as uh listed in ten twenty-two and then the uh eligible for subcommittees would be the fa- uh, the family childcare provider, philanthropy, uh H E I C C, home visiting and the uh uh parent seat. Uh, and then potentially use the same term limits uh as outlined in S B ten twenty-two. So we discussed previously about the family childcare provider, that that's been very difficult to fill and basically has been absent for many years. Uh, decision, uh, decision to move some of these to a, a eligible for subcommittee, uh, the parent, the parent seat, uh, the PDG, uh, the PDG grant actually will be having a parent advisory council. Advisory council, is that the correct word?
Yeah.
So as in it, uh, as a parent advisory council as part of the PDG, uh, and reporting to the E O E L, uh, we felt that the parent seat uh is, is covered. Philanthropy, uh, we had a large discussion and uh since philanthropy often is a thunder, uh, we thought that that might be best to uh remove potential conflict of interest. And then the H E I C C and home visiting, uh, the reasons behind those are, uh, number one, both of those are have voices through the Department of Health. So H I C C is a council itself and uh it reports through E I S, early intervention uh section through the Children with Special Health Needs Branch to the Family Health Services Division, which is me, to the Director of Health. And so, uh, uh, same with home visiting, uh, your Ohana is actually, uh, part of the work of our M I C B program. Uh, so a home visiting has a, has a voice specifically through the Home Visiting Services Unit to the Maternal Child Health Branch, to the Family Health Services Division, to the Director of Health. And, uh, that's what we got. So we have two, two amended versions of uh incorporating some of the pieces of ten twenty-two, uh, and then the second version here, amended version of our E L B structure is using, um, uh, pieces of our own, uh, uh, board structure. Let me get these both on the main page. Okay, so, uh, opening this up for discussion. Would like to begin, anyone?
Um, I have a question on the D, um, keep nine
Um, I have a question on the D, um, keep nine voting members, what's the justification for keeping? Um, F C I Ls and Head Start. Relative to other early childhood development settings.
The uh, other childhood settings, again, the family childcare provider, we've not been able to fill. And then the others have, uh, potentially voices through other, other avenues and are potentially already represented on the board. Or have, have opportunities to be, uh, to provide input through, uh, through a member of the board.
Yeah, I think the thing I'm seeing that's missing. You know, when we look at F C I Ls or Head Start or center-based providers, or even Hawaiian medium, it's very focused on. Child, early education and not necessarily health and safety. And so the health and safety pieces aren't represented in the voting, but again, this, again, this goes to the scope of E O E L. Um, and if we feel that that is the scope of E O E L is really focused on E C E, um, then I'm okay with this.
Well, remember, again, there is no reason why any of the other health, safety, other representatives can't fill a Kauai. Honolulu County, Maui or Hawaii County seats, right? I mean, that, that's the. That's the other, that's the other piece of it. Uh, Kailani, go ahead.
Aloha, mahalo for, you know, recognizing the Hawaiian medium piece. Um, now that I'm. Thinking through this, I remember. One of the triggers to kind of open this can of worms, um, was Aha Punanaleo seeking a named seat. Um, and that came up because we really struggle to find representation. You know, from, from our community, from our organization that can consistently contribute. Uh, so I think that we were seeking something that similar to Kamama schools that has, you know, or. A designee or wha- whatever, however it's worded. Um, and I'm just wondering if. That might be appropriate for a similar position to ensure that that. Voice is there. So I'm just putting that out there, it's not a fully. Full thought, but, um, I know that that was one of the concerns we had. Before all of this even came up, so I just feel like if we're kind of picking it apart and thinking through it, I. I think that change should be included in what the suggestions would be.
Thank you. Uh, Justina, go ahead.
Um, I think, I mean, I'm in consideration more of like the option C and that. It's, I do think it could be beneficial to have some level of flexibility of who's situated on that board that. Kind of wi- can withstand the test of time. I do thi- I do think that that tends to be a little bit of a challenge with our current structure. Um, and option C, I can see in there at least the thinking behind it feels like it's providing a little more flexibility. And who could fill some of those roles but still have the background in place. Um, one thing I didn't know was whether or not there's any proposed changes, um, from these to the. Qualification section or we leave it as is in ten twenty-two, so that's a question. Um. And then I, I mean, I won't reflect too much on D, but it, it is feels kind of similar or, or pretty similar to our current structure. Um, and I don't think the rationale is very solid for the philanthropy seat being uh only eligible for subcommittee in part because. Actually, funders are the ones who have the least conflict of interest in a lot of ways because we're not seeking funding, we're providing funding to programs. Um, so just wanted to point that out that I wouldn't necessarily use that as rationale for why the seat would be, um. Only regulated to a subcommittee role. Uh, and then I guess, uh, and then I'm responding directly to what Kailani shared, which is I. I actually think that it should be left more broad for Hawaiian medium, early learning program providers. Um, understanding that it may be much of the time it's filled by Aha Punanaleo, but there are other, um, early learning. Why in medium, early learning programs that would be, I mean, maybe they'd be ready to participate on the board. And maybe they are now, or maybe they would be in the future.
Let me just, Tina.
Matt, may I add something?
Yes, go ahead, Bob.
Philanthropy one, because I think, Justin, uh, this, this is my thinking about it. It's less conflict of interest from a philanthropy point of view than it is. The potential for undue influence by the voice of the philanthropy if. Members of the board are applying for grants from those philanthropic agencies. And while there may not be any undue influence in actuality, the perception is there. Um, and. I think there have been occasions where that has been an issue, quite frankly, in decision-making.
Can I ask a sensitive question around C? I like C, I mean, C to me is cleaner than D, I think D there's. That we'd have a lot of discussion about why around some of these, and I think we're running into some conflicts of interest. As well with, with some of the representation on voting. Um. You know, K S is, is a funder. Significant funder. Um, and so I think a question for me, I'm still not clear. And we, you know, ten years ago, we had these conversations when we were figuring out the board, is for the ex officio members. What is the just, and there might be a really good justification, but what is the justification for having K S and H I S as ex officio? Beyond the State Departments.
Uh, I believe it's because they represent the other two pieces of the, uh. The education, the education triad, or I don't know what you want to call it, uh. Uh, D O E, K S and H A I S, uh, really com- comp- comprise the majority of all of our. Uh, education services throughout the state. The, the only people I think, Bob. Catholic schools are not. In here, right? That's the only.
Catholic schools are part of H A I S, not all of them, but the, um, a number of them are. Um, we don't have the individual religious sector schools always, um, as a part of it, but some of them are. It's, it's a real mix.
Okay.
And, and Carrie, I think the answer primarily was, and I, and I don't know in the very beginning, other than. Um, to again, provide the diversity of, of viewpoints. Um, in terms of looking at the breadth of education in the state.
Yeah, so again, I think it, for me, again, we're, we're getting narrow on education, right? I mean, it, it begs the question, like, why isn't the Hoises, the H A A P, the A P, right, represented? I mean, I could see up the one pediatrician, but we're still missing that health and safety piece. Um, for ex officio, and I know that at the beginning, it really was Governor Abercrombie was really pushing public pre-K. That was the heavy focus ten years ago. Uh, but it does for me beg the question of, for the non-voting members, is that the right makeup?
So, uh, Carrie, uh, clarifying question, are you saying that the pediatrician should be a non-voting member?
No, I'm just thinking about all of the other, um, like K S and H I S represent early education predominantly preschool. Not birth to three. Um, and there are other associations, you know, across the state that focus on. More of the health and the safety components of early childhood development. That aren't necessarily there. And so I was just wondering what would justification was for the heavy focus on just education, K S and H I S. And I think it made sense ten years ago when the focus was heavily public pre-K rollout. Um, so. Just a question. And especially if K S is going to go down the path of no longer providing preschool, which it sounds like they're trying to get out of. Um, it just would, I, it'd be nice for me to see a little bit more parity on the health and safety side.
I think that's why D H S and D O H are there.
Right, but so is D O E, right, already?
Yeah.
Yeah.
But I think that's, you know, the, the more global agency, which certainly is what H I S is as well. K is just by virtue of its size as a global agency, um. And the fact that it has settings on four islands and reaches out into the community in a varieties of ways, not just educationally.
Thank you for having the conversation.
I wanted to put out to, Aha Punanaleo is not part of H A I S, just so we know.
Yeah.
So, um, Matt, this is Melody.
Go ahead.
Um, I, I too like C a little more than D, but I'm just trying to make sure that. The parts of the, the, uh, A system is being represented, so. There are, you know, there are parts of this, of the system, workforce is a part of the system. Uh, family engagement is a part, it's the, those systems pieces. And infant toddler, which I think is where, um, Carrie is going down. And the. Can we make a suggestion for those three at-large folks that, um. You know, there be some. Representation from those sys- systems pieces.
Melody, I like that because when I, I posted in the chat, um, Iowa, Iowa system is. For me, really clean and clear and it makes sense in terms of who's on their board, what their plan is, who does what, the specializations. Um, so I like that idea, and if you look at what's required for Iowa, it does require. You know, different, um, expertise to serve on their early childhood board. Um, and even though they're representing counties, it also requires them to have background. Um, and to Kailani's point, you do want to have a mix, right? You do want to have people from the business community, you want. People in communications, you know, whatever, other skillsets, but you also want them to have, because the system is so dis- you know. It isn't centralized. Um, I do like how they have that representation, so I would be a fan of. Adding qualifications to the people representing people sitting in those county seats.
Now, could you repeat the three you said again? I, I got family engagement, but then I, my mind went somewhere else.
Uh, workforce, workforce development. And, um, infant toddler, which would be the care. Part of the education, it does require education, but you know, when we think of infant toddler, infants and toddlers. That's where our childcare system is. Um, so, so maybe. Those three especially along with the wine medium and, um, I know the pediatrician. Child development focus, that could be our, in early intervention or.
Yeah.
You know, with that focus, but I didn't, I didn't see the other, those other three in C in any way yet. So, but I do like C more than D.
So they, are, are you saying then that those specific three should be called out? Or are you saying that those three at-large should have some systems? Connection experience, expertise, whatever, um, that could include workforce. Family engagement, whatever, so that is, okay, so it doesn't have to be. A representative of each of those, but those would be examples of systems.
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Making that recommendation for those folks.
So, uh, um, that's adding to the, adding to the list of qualifications.
Yeah.
Because actually those qual- those qualifications could be for any, right? I mean, it could be for any of the county and or at-large.
Yeah. Yeah.
That's correct. That is where I could see it, because I'm rereading the qualification section in ten twenty-two. And really the only two qualifications that get, they're more early learning focus, so it doesn't actually full. Follow the full breadth of the early learning board's mission. Um, so you need to add something that encompassed health, perhaps some of the other ones that Mel also brought to the table.
Yeah, if you, if you all click on the, um, the link I sent, it's really, we might have some language. Ready-made based on. Looking at the representatives in Iowa and look at their skillsets that they bring to the table, they're excellent. Um, and it would be wonderful to have people from the different counties that had some of these skillsets and backgrounds. I think we just need to weave that language into the qualifications.
Any other discussion from our board members on? Options presented.
Hi, it's Erin. Um, would our, I, I think I too prefer C over D. Um, and I'm looking at this advisory council, um. I guess I'm not familiar enough to know if we would also suggest who would be on the. Advisory council or if that would be left up to the board to determine when they create the advisory council. Um, and, and I just know that there are some, you know, obviously, we're all here because we have an investment in, in the system. Um, and so I, I don't know if people would feel more confident if, um. They knew that their sector would continue to be represented on that stakeholder council, for example. Um, so that's just kind of one question about that's, I, I do think that advisory council would be really. Maybe would kind of meet the needs of hearing from the sectors without having to. Um, have them be on the governing board. Um, and I just wanted to. Uh, point out, I guess, that, um, as we were, as Kailani mentioned earlier. Part of the impetus for some of this was some of the bills that were going through last year to request seats on the early learning board. And I do hesitate in the sense of there is still representation on this, on both of these. Um, and that was what we thought was potentially why, um, this. Um, and that was what we thought was potentially why, um, the, you know, the legislator, legislature was asking us to reevaluate our purpose and our composition. Um, because we were getting these requests. So I'm, I'm curious to, to know if we think that might continue to open the early learning board up for potential um, sectors or, or agencies to request seats in the future. Um, and if that would still cause an, an issue.
Um, I don't, I don't think it was the representations per se, it was the size. Is that right?
Okay.
I think it was mostly, I, why would we add, I mean, basically, I think it was, uh, Senator Qadon who said, why would we add another seat? Because, so it's 17, or I think we had 13, 17?
I, I think that's accurate. And the other part that I always thought was implied was the fact that it was a representative board. And, and that was related to it as well.
So, um, Bob, I believe if we for the stakeholder advisory council, that's basically similar to what we did for the executive director search. Um, if, if we, if we put it in statute, we lose the, we lose the ability to add and subtract and, and uh, adjust the stakeholder advisory council to potentially new uh, new stakeholders or new sectors that may develop, I don't know, right? So, uh, leaving it, leaving it broad as a, you know, stakeholder advisory council, uh, maybe developed by the board, um, or approved by the board, uh, gives the board the flexibility to craft the best advisory council versus putting it in statute. That may be too much, that may be too directive is, am I using the correct words?
It, it also allows the flexibility of focusing on the priorities of EEL and the kind of support it needs if it's left open to change.
Any, any other, any other discussion at the moment? Questions, issues, concerns, ideas, feelings, opinions?
Matt?
Yes.
Here, I appreciate this conversation. And I think we're getting closer to something that looks like C. Um, I'll circulate these, but I am looking at Iowa's bylaws for the Early Childhood State Board. Um, and they have 21 voting members. And the interesting thing is they're, the people are nominated by local boards, which obviously we don't have local boards. But I wonder if those, those, the people that represent the counties or not represent the counties, the people who are, you know, they represent the counties. Um, again, just going back to the qualifications, I'd like, I'd, I'd really want to make sure that we are including folks that have extensive experience, whether it's workforce development or it's health, it's safety, you know, it's the early childhood development pieces that I, I think are really important. Um, and I'll, I'll circle these so you guys can take a look, but I think this is really well thought out. Um, and it reflects for me, when I read their bylaws and when I look at their representation, for me, it better reflects our early learning board mission and statute than what we are currently proposing. Um, and so I think if we can continue to have this conversation and get closer to meeting the charge of what we're supposed to be doing as an early learning board, um, the better.
Anyone else? Hey, um, Bob, I am going to, uh, suggest a motion.
I'm ready.
Um, I am going to motion that the board. See what I want to say here. Maybe I need some help. The, how, how do we make a motion to allow the governance subcommittee to uh, use, uh, item C, the amended version of 1022 to craft potential testimony for an upcoming hearing?
You would move that the board gives the governance standing subcommittees the authority to craft testimony in support of option C with revisions related to the inclusion of systems experience early learning and care. Systems experience expertise um, within the qualifications for membership. Um, Matt, I'm guessing that's kind of where you wanted to go.
I, yes, I, I believe so. Um, yes, because I think what needs to happen, uh, so my thought is, uh, we need a decision from the board on how to proceed. Then, uh, the governance subcommittee, we need to meet again before the early learning board meeting on the ninth of March. Um, and or, um, wait, when is first crossover is March 9th? Last day for Bill to pass third reading uh, and go before, after crossing over the bill passes first reading and referred to committee. Okay, so, um, March 9th, uh, early learning board meeting is actually on a good day because that's crossover day. So, um, if this is my thought, that if we move forward for the subcommittee to draft potential testimony, we can present that to the board on the night uh, for review, revisions and approval.
Okay, so what you're saying is that the testimony, you're, you're asking the board to approve the governance subcommittee crafting this testimony, that it would then be back to the board for approval before submission, correct?
Yes, correct. Sorry, folks, we're, I, I'm, I'm, I'm learning as I go here in some of this. So this is new to me. Appreciate your patience.
Um, Matt?
Yes.
Um, Chris Jackson kind of put in some language you might want to take a look at. I think it's pretty, pretty good, pretty clear of what you wanted to say. She, she put in the chat.
Okay, let me see here.
Matt, can I, can, can I make one recommendation to Chris's language? Because she talks about the inclusion of early care and learning systems experience. I would say early childhood development systems experience.
Yeah, I'm sorry. I was just writing as Bob was.
Oh, sorry.
Well, this is, these are Bob's words. It's best that I could capture them.
Thanks, Chris.
Yeah, thank you, Chris. Let's see, this is a group, this is a group effort. We need, we need, uh, we need everyone to help out here. Uh, okay, so that was early, not early care, but early developed, early.
Early childhood development system.
Development. Systems experience. Okay. Uh, so let me try this. Thank you, Chris. Um, I moved that the board give the governance subcommittee the authority to craft testimony in support of our option C as discussed. Uh, uh, for the amended version of 1002, 1022 with revisions related to the inclusion of early childhood development systems experience and expertise within the qualifications for membership. And bring this, uh, testimony uh, to the board for approval. How did I do? I may have added too much words.
I think you did it. Okay.
Okay.
Is there a second to the motion?
Second.
Thank you, Mel. Motion's made and seconded to, for the board to give the governance standing subcommittee the authority to craft testimony in support of option C with revisions related to the inclusion of early childhood development systems experience and expertise within the qualifications for membership and to bring back to the board for approval. Okay, is there any discussion? All right, hearing none, we'll move to.
Just, Justina, I see your hand, I'm sorry.
Thanks, Matt. Um, I, I think my only, my big consideration around this is also that, the, that qualifications piece feels a little vague to me and murky, and I do think that's important for us to address in the proposed, um, piece. So I just think because they're combined in this, um, option C plus the qualifications, I'm not ready to vote yes on this one. I just want to make that known. Um, the qualifications, we've only sort of talked about very briefly and the way it stands now gives a lot of latitude about how they get revised.
Um, Justina, could you elaborate on what you would like to hear, see it say?
Well, in the, I mean, for example, just like we have C laid out, we could take the qualification section of 1022 and modify those three components with suggestions.
Oh, okay. I, I thought that was incorporated in this motion. Am I missing? I'm not understanding something, I guess.
I just don't feel clear enough about what would be written about, uh, experience with the early childhood system in that qualification section.
So I guess what I'm hearing you say is you would like it spelled out what the qualifications addition pieces or revisions might be like around family engagement, workforce. Is, is that, is that what?
Yeah, a little more detail on what it would look like for this full board meeting, because I don't think we'll have enough time between GSS going back and revising it and then come back to the full board.
So one, Bob, one, um, one recommendation might be, um, again, I'm looking at the Iowa bylaws. I like how they say the nominations shall reflect the range of interests represented so that the governor is able to appoint one or more members each for education, health, human services, business, faith and public interests. So they like give these categories, which I think are helpful, and that is more representative of what we mean by early childhood systems.
Yeah, and I was holding off on getting, giving suggestions because I know there's a motion on the table. So then I, anyway, kind of waiting for that part because we can't actually amend the motion right now.
All right. So Justina, what you were saying is move ahead and vote. And then if it doesn't pass, you have more discussion that should happen. Is that correct? Justina, did I lose you?
Oh, sorry, I was nodding my head yes, but maybe you didn't see.
I can't see anything except the screen, sorry. All right. And if there's no further discussion, we will vote on the motion as presented. All right. Justina?
Nay.
Erin?
Nay.
And come back. Kailani?
Aye.
Megan?
Aye.
And Ben is not here. May?
Aye.
I vote aye. Now, four?
Aye.
Murray, here. Carrie?
Nay.
Mel?
Aye.
And I'll come back to Erin. Are you back?
Yes, sorry. I thought I answered, but I think, anyway, aye.
Okay. Um, there are seven ayes, so the motion is carried. Um, we will move forward with the authority to, um, the governance standings that committed to craft the testimony as defined in the motion.
And, uh, Justina and others, uh, as you have, uh, ideas for qualifications, please send them to me because there's uh, we can include, we can include uh, board member, uh, input in our, uh, subcommittee deliberations and then what we, uh, bring back to the, uh, a board for approval.
Okay. Um, Matt, did you have any more business that you wish to conduct?
Uh, no, I think that's it. Thank you. Uh, thank you, everybody. I know that, uh, we, we have a lot to do. The subcommittee will take this and, uh, we will, again, uh, use your inputs and, um, the discussion today to, uh, craft testimony that, uh, uh, we hope will reflect, uh, reflect what we decided today. So um, I, uh, I have not, uh, we have not scheduled a subcommittee meeting. Um, I, uh, I have not, uh, we have not scheduled a subcommittee meeting yet, I have to do that. With the board, uh, with, sorry, with the subcommittee between now and before the ninth of March. I'll probably go for some time next week, so.
Yeah, that will be important because we will need to get it on the agenda.
Yes, yes. Thanks, Bob.
And thank you for leading us through this process, um. And we're at a point where we will be in a position to be able to share a testimony, which I think is really critical. We've discussed some really, um, important issues about the board and its composition and nature. Um, and I've appreciated the additional thoughts that have been shared by everyone, but. Your leadership, Matt, has really been helpful, so much appreciated, thank you.
Uh, Matt, Chris had a question in chat, she said, for the minutes, did Matt say when G S S will be meeting?
I just said not sometime next week, we have to, uh, I have to, uh, hold the. Subcommittee to make sure, we have to meet before the second, correct, Bob?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Mm-hmm.
So we'll be meeting between now and March first. Because we got, we have to get it on the agenda, that's published on the second of March.
Yeah. Okay, thank you all, um. One of the, um, additional items on the agenda was legislative bill testimony. Um, if time were permitting, and we have about fifteen minutes. When we could, we can, um, office, open it up for conversation, I just want to make. It's clear that this is, um, not specific. Testimony that we would provide on any particular bill or not provide. Um, but the action item here would be if there were any actions similar to what we just took around the. Um, S B ten twenty two with reference to the governance subcommittee continuing its work. Um, but we can have discussion, um, around any of the other legislative bills. This was included at the request of a member at the last meeting, if we had time, would we add this to the agenda, so. I will open it up to any board member who would like to bring up a bill, um, to share some thoughts. And then we can have some additional discussion as needed.
Um, Bob, this is Carrie, I, I would like to bring up the Infant and Early Childhood Mental Health Bill. Um, that is designed to support the implementation of the Integrated Infant and Early Childhood Behavioral Health Plan. That the board, the Early Learning Board, um, blessed, um, and helped to move forward. Uh, and what it does is it anchors the, um, infant, early childhood mental health program. Um, in the Department of Health. Uh, it would provide some centralized coordination, um, across the system for this work. Um, it is moving both on the House side and on the Senate side, it's going to the finance committees, WAM and FIN. Um, and we'd really appreciate the Early Learning Board's support on that bill.
Um, I think we had that on our tracking list, did we not? Uh, we do, um, Matt, do you want to weigh in, are you still with us, or did we lose you? Yeah. I just wondered where D O H was, Carrie, have you had conversations in that, have any sense of that?
Uh, yeah, um, I don't want to speak for Matt, we've been working with Lauren Kim. Um, and Department of Health is in support of the bill, they've provided testimony and support consistently. Um, and we did, this was something that everybody worked together on to make sure that our state systems were. Aligned, um, and on board, and making sure that we're all, we're designing it in a way that will be successful.
Okay.
Yeah.
All right, thank you, um, I will definitely go back and take a look and see where. We might be supported. Um, okay.
Sorry, I'm back.
Okay, I, I, I was just, Carrie had talked about the, uh, mental health bill, um, and. D O, D O H's role, and I just wondered where D O H stood on the bill. And it sounds as if your folks have been supporting.
This is, um. Thirteen fifty one and ten fifty three. Is that right?
Yeah, correct.
Yes, uh. The director's office is in charge and they've been supporting the bill.
Okay. All right. Um, any other bills that anyone wants to call to our attention at this point? All right, hearing none, we'll continue on with the agenda, um, we have an opportunity for public comment. Uh, remaining, um, again, a reminder that it has to be. An ag- related to an agenda item, and there's a two minute time limit, is there any public comment to come forth at this time? All right, hearing none, we'll move to close out the meeting, the primary agenda outcome. Of this meeting obviously is the assignment of to the governance standing subcommittee to. Uh, modify the approval of option three C, which was a modification. Of S B ten twenty two as presented, um, with a specific look at the inclusion of. Um, early childhood development systems experience and expertise within the qualifications. The subcommittee will bring, um, a recommendation to testimony back to the board for approval at its March meeting. And that's the primary outcome, other than a lot of hard thinking, good thoughts. Um, and good discussion this morning, so much appreciated, Carrie, did you have a chance to find us a thought to end our meeting today?
Um, no, because I was, sorry, I was studying, but I can pull something up really quick. Can wait one second.
Okay.
Unless someone else has a quote that they'd like to share. If not, I'm gonna pull up my Star Wars quotes. Um. Uh. Okay, okay, this is from Queen Jamelia. We must keep our faith in the republic, the day we stop believing democracy can work is the day that we lose it. So I appreciate everybody's sharing today and participation and in helping to reshape the board.
All right, would you send a written copy to, um, Ashley and Chris, please?
Sure, I can actually, I can put it in chat before we sign off.
Okay, thanks so much. Um, the meeting is officially adjourned, thanks everyone for finding the time to join us today and engage in a healthy discussion. Aloha, stay dry.